Okay. Good evening. This is a special city council meeting. Today is October 8, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Cyrop, if you could please cite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of course, please stand if you're able.
Thank you. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, the meeting will include a teleconference location at Renaissance Nashville Hotel, 611 Commerce Street, Nashville, Tennessee 37203. Councilmember Bonilla Jr. will participate via teleconference. The agenda was posted at the teleconference location, and the public will have an opportunity to address the city council. So even the announcement of Southgate Elementary School is going to reach Nashville, Tennessee today. So, you know, you're now national. Madam City Clerk, if you can, please take the roll.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Syrup.
Present.
Councilmember Zermeño. And Mayor Salinas.
Present, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our closed session announcement for October 1, 2024, and October 8, 2024. And Mr. City Attorney, if you can give a closed session announcement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There was a closed session, October 1, last Tuesday, which convened at 7:00 p.m. to discuss the appointment or employment of public employees to wit the position of City Manager. There was no reportable action. That meeting adjourned at 8:00 p.m. This evening, the council convened in closed session at 6:00 p.m., 5:30, actually, pursuant to posted notice in the Brown Act. The meeting actually started at 6:00 p.m. with all members present, no public speakers. Council conferred with legal counsel regarding pending litigation the matter of Dorothy Jean Johnson versus City of Hayward. This is a personal injury action. It was moved, seconded, and carried with Andrews and Zermeño making and seconding the motion respectively. Unanimously approved, 7-0, in the amount of $200,000. Councilmember Bonilla participated remotely per Brown Act requirements in the closed session adjourned at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a special presentation. And this is a truly a special presentation. Today, we are honoring and recognizing Southgate Elementary School. And let's give a big round of applause to Southgate. All right? Nice. For those who don't know, Southgate Elementary School this year was acknowledged as a nationally recognized and awarded the National Blue Ribbon Award from the U.S. Department of Education. So let's give Southgate another big round of applause. And, you know, I looked at the website earlier this afternoon, and, you know, of all the elementary schools and middle schools and high schools across the country, there's, I think I saw, there's only like 39 or so elementary schools, or I think it was 64, 64 elementary schools throughout the country that were acknowledged and has really rose up to this occasion, to this achievement. And if you figure, 64 elementary schools out of all the elementary schools across this country, that is quite an achievement and is quite, you know, a lot of work. So let's give Southgate another big round of applause. You know, I did, I did take a peek, if you want to hold that. I did take a peek at the application that was written to support the award. And there were three things that I saw that were absolutely incredible. And I know these are things that schools all across the country are doing every day. But, you know, only 64 schools across the country actually, you know, did them in such a way that earned them this award. The first thing that caught my attention when I read the report was that it was the focus in classroom and in instruction. We know that, you know, there's a lot of ingredients that go into school achievement and academic achievement. But arguably, the single greatest, you know, strategy is quality of instruction and quality of curriculum. And Southgate Elementary School is doing that with outstanding achievement and an outstanding level. The second aspect that I saw that was really impressive was, and, you know, and I have to admit, over the years, I know that you have had an incredibly active PTA. And I have missed, and I know I, and I have been invited. And every time I'm invited, something happens that I'm unable to go. And anyways, I always apologize. But one of the things that Southgate Elementary School does very successfully is that they have an incredibly supportive school community, both on campus and off of campus. It's all the, it's the community around them. And that is clearly a testament by the engagement of the PTA. They have an incredibly active PTA. There is a lot of activities that happens. And we also know that the other secret ingredient of a successful school is the engagement of parents. It's the engagement of families. And all of that together, working to support the school. And then lastly, the other piece I read that was incredibly impressive was, of course, the school leadership. Outstanding administrators who are leaders in curriculum and leaders in instruction. And, you know, they're administrators and leaders that parents and faculty can turn to, who can, you know, that can really model the kind of success that we want throughout the entire city and through the school district. I work very closely with the superintendent, Dr. Jason Ryman, who is here. And he is part of my Education City Working Group. And, you know, one of the things that we're always talking about with the President of Cal State and the President of Chabot, and of course, with the President of the Chamber, is, you know, what can we do to make sure that all of our schools are achieving? And we're always talking about quality of instruction and quality of curriculum. And so those are the two things that this school, that Southgate Elementary School has been able to do very successfully. So with that said, I just saw who walked in. Trustee Prada just walked in. And of course, Vice Principal Wright from Outeaton High School, you know. And of course, we have representatives from the PTA that are here, and faculty are here. And so with that said, I'd like to present to you a very humble recognition from the city of your achievement that you can certainly post in your office or out in the hallway somewhere. And yeah, congratulations. And I'd like to call the principal, Felicia Costa, and of course, the Assistant Principal, Elba Herrera.
Do I speak here or?
Yeah.
Okay. Press the button. Well, first, I want to thank Mr. Mark Salinas and all of our council members for this amazing award. And then next, I want to say that it can't, not possible without the support of our superintendent and Hayward Unified. So as I lift this award up, as I lift this award up, I need to lift up the whole Hayward Unified School District for all of the support and all of the inner workings. And then all of the outer systems. Then our Hayward Board. And then next, our Alameda County and City of Hayward. It, in the state of California, of course. It, as I'm making, as we're making decisions, as we are, as I'm learning more and more as a new administrator and working with community groups, parents, PTA, and everyone, I am learning how everything is working together with the city, with Hayward Unified as a district, and then all of the community members and stakeholders. And I'm really just blown away because all the amazing things that's happening at Southgate and that the award is just the cherry on top. But, you know, for example, I was speaking to them, but also speaking to you. But, you know, we're getting, our school is getting refreshed. And that is a part of the state and city measures. I'm still learning about all the details of the outer workings. But I'm just saying that it all plays a part. And I am truly, truly, we are truly grateful as a school and as a district. So as I receive this award, I receive it on behalf of Hayward Unified. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much and congratulations, Ms. Acosta and of course, Ms. Herrera, for your leadership. And we'll look forward to seeing you guys again next year. No. These are tough awards, by the way. And, oh, every five years. Okay, so, yes, these are tough awards. And I know there's a lot of competition throughout the country to receive these awards. And so to see that Hayward has a school, a blue ribbon school, that's fantastic. So I think Councilmember Zermeño has a couple of words.
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations again. Our, one of our grandsons, Daniel, actually spent first grade at Southgate School. It were four blocks away from your school. And the mayor is correct. The parents are active. I was called, and please come on over and help us save the trees. If you remember, the trees were going to go, going to be turned down, torn down to put the solar. So we convinced the HU, the administrators, to move the solar panels away. So that's really tremendous. So thank you very much again. I think that's tremendous, and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Thank you. Well, let's give Southgate another, oh.
And I do play basketball with the vice principal's husband.
Let's give Southgate another big round of applause. Again, thank you, Dr. Ryman, for everything. Appreciate it. Okay. Now I'd like to move on to public comments. This is reserved for anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment on something that is on the agenda or not on the agenda. I don't have any cards here, and I don't, oh, I do have a hand up. And I have TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens. TJ, you can go right ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm TJ with HCC, and I wanted to check in tonight about a couple of things. First, I wanted to address the road renovation on Tennyson that has caused a lot of concern and distress for our residents and has been a frequent subject on social media. Some of the complaints from Nextdoor include making a two-lane into a one-lane, losing the right turn lane at Tennyson and Hisparian, the extension of cement, the crosswalk and bus stop creating a wide turn, and car accidents, putting parking spaces outside of bike lanes, replacing street parking with a wall toward the end of Tennyson by industrial, and ultimately, more traffic congestion. I'm hoping that the city and police can speak to some of the concerns, such as what the accident rates have been and whether there's ongoing assessment and improvement going forward. If we've learned anything from Patrick and Gadding, Campus Drive, and Orchard Avenue, it seems like the common denominator in several of the recent traffic, street calming and renovation projects has been that what appears sound in the planning stage often has potholes in the execution phase and that those driving these routes don't feel adequately prepared for the changes. Councilmembers Zermeño kindly served as a communications liaison in some of the Nextdoor posts. But I think it'd be helpful for the city to at least have a Q&amp;A post on social media to field some of the real-time issues that are coming up. And speaking of communication, my second item is the Council Public Safety Committee that has met three times since its inception. I know we've had some emails back and forth, but I wanted to emphasize again the importance this body serves in our community. And I strongly advocate to increase awareness of its meeting dates and content. There's currently no agenda notice going out and no opportunity to subscribe. There have been very informative reports from our fire and police chiefs, but most of the meeting revolves around questions from the committee members. There are no meeting minutes published for any of these three previous meetings and no video recordings other than on the city website itself. Please consider the audience for your future quarterly meetings. I really do feel it will do a great deal of good to have more community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any more public comment, and I don't have any cards here. So I'd like to close public comment and go to City Manager's comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have no City Manager comments this evening.
None?
None.
Wow. Okay.
Apologies.
All is good, then?
Yeah, all is great.
Perfect. Okay, okay, no city comments. Next is our consent calendar. Nobody has asked me to pull anything, so I will entertain a motion. Moved by Councilmember Goldstein.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Roach. And because we have Councilmember Bonilla remote, we need to do a roll call vote. So Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Roach.
Aye.
Councilmember Syrup.
Yes.
Councilmembers Zermeño. Mayor Salinas.
Yes. And without any objection, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to public hearing. Item number 12 is Master Fee Schedule. Adopt a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 2025 Master Fee Schedule and finding the action is exempt from CEQA review. And, you know, we've heard this before, and I know that there's just a couple of edits to it. And if council has no objections, I can forego council report or staff report and go straight to questions if council has questions. Councilmember Syrup over there looks like he's got a burning question. But so I will forego council or staff report and go straight to questions before I go to public comment. But Councilmember Syrup, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the staff report that was written here that allows us to forego the presentation tonight. Just wanted to point out that there is an impound in storage fee being associated with merchandise from street vendors that are seized from street vendors. Was this price purely determined, or this fee, rather, purely determined by the cost of staffing?
Yeah. It's specifically related to, and I do know that our Director of Development Services is also online, but it does take into consideration staff time as well as materials required to actually impound and space to actually store. So it is a combination of the time it takes, the location, and the materials it needs to collect the items.
Got it. Should I wait to give a comment after? Okay, okay, thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions? Seeing none, open up for public comment. I don't see any public comment, neither in the room or online. So I'd like to close public comment. And then I'll defer to Councilmember Syrup. I think he had a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of these fees. It's nothing too complicated or out of the blue. But I do think I would like to see these fees, particularly for street vendors, being incentive for them to get a permit and go through the process. And so if there's a way for the fee to be waived if they go and get the appropriate paperwork taken care of prior to retrieving their equipment, I guess, I know this is maybe separate from what's being voted on tonight, but I would like to see some kind of incentive structure that makes folks participate in the program and maybe allow us to put a bit more pressure on the county as well.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Did you get what you needed? Okay, perfect. So I'll entertain a motion. Oh, no, before, I'd like to open up for public comment. There is no, already did, okay, that's right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm with that.
Moved by Councilmember Andrews. Seconded by.
Sure, I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roach. Madam City Clerk, if you can take roll call.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Roach.
Aye.
Councilmember Syrup.
Yes.
Councilmembers Zermeño.
Yes.
Mayor Salinas.
Yes, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number 13, which is Cal City's 2024 Annual Conference. Adopt a resolution designating voting delegates and alternates for the annual conference scheduled for October 16 to the 18, 2024, and adopt the resolution of the General Assembly of the League of California Cities calling for the California Legislature to enact laws that ensure that what applies to one applies to all in the fair and equal treatment of all government officials at all levels in the state of California. And this is, the interim city manager was going to kick this off, but what I'll do is I'll forego staff report. Pretty much, everything was written in the staff report. And next week, for those who don't know, next week, I think all council members, with the exception of Councilmember Zermeño, will be going to Long Beach, California for the annual League of California Cities Conference. This is a conference where council members and mayors and city managers and other city administrators from throughout the state. And I believe I've heard the city attorney say the number before. How many cities are there in the state of California? 483. Now, does that include the latest city in the state that joined the, a mountain house? So they're the. 483 with mountain house. So it's going to be a party. No, I don't know if it's going to be a party or not. But mountain house, welcome to the League of California Cities, mountain house. Anyways, so next week, we'll be in Long Beach from Wednesday to Friday. And part of the conference is there are two council members, two members of the council that will be the designate who will participate in the voting. And there's an alternate, just in case the designate, the designee is unavailable. Since we're all going, I'll be the designee. The alternate will be Councilmember Syrup. And if nobody has any issue with that, I will entertain questions next.
Yeah, so I'm in the process of confirming my registration. I've been unable to find lodgings. And so I just want to actually make room for someone else to potentially be the alternate, just in case, although I think.
An alternate to the alternate?
Yeah, although it might not be necessary tonight. But I just, I want to know if someone would want to step up for that.
I'll be, I can be an alternate to the alternate.
Okay, so that's Plan B. Good. All right. Okay, great. Would somebody like to move the item?
I'm happy to move the item, Mayor.
Moved by Councilmember Bonilla Jr., seconded by Councilmember Zermeño. Madam City Clerk, if you can take roll. But before we do that, I should have opened it up for public comment. There is no public comment online nor in the audience. So I'd like to close public comment, come back. And moved by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Councilmember Zermeño. Madam City Clerk, if you can take the roll. Or Councilmember Bonilla moved it. Councilmember Zermeño seconded it. Madam City Clerk, if you can please take the roll. Thank you. Apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Roach.
Aye.
Councilmember Syrup.
Yes.
Councilmember Zermeño. Mayor Salinas.
Yes, and it passes unanimously. Thank you and congratulations, alternate to the alternate. Okay, next item is item 14, is Fiscal Year 2025 Salary Plan Amendment. This is an adoption, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the City of Hayward Salary Plan for fiscal year 2025. And I believe that there was, I believe there was only two minor changes to this item. And I will forego staff report. And I'll go straight to council questions. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I'd like to close this and go to public comment. I don't see any public comment online. I don't see any public comment in the room. So I'd like to close public comment, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Moved by Councilmember Andrews.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Syrup. And Madam City Clerk, if you can take the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
That's a nine. Thank you. Councilmember Roach.
Aye.
Councilmember Syrup.
Yes.
Councilmembers Zermeño. Mayor Salinas.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to council reports and announcements. Are there any council reports or announcements? Seeing none, like to close council reports and announcements. Move on to council referrals. There are no referrals. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is in October 15, 2024.
Thank you.